Okay, good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to our February 2nd, 2021 Board of Supervisors meeting. Before we continue, those present, I ask that if you have your cellphones, to please mute them or turn them off. We don't want them going off during the meeting. For those of you that are on the call, if under Call to the Public you wish to speak, it's you dial *9 and that'll indicate that you want to speak and then you can be unmuted. So with that, I will go ahead and call this meeting to order. And Chris, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Chris. Next, Item B is adoption of the agenda. Madam Manager, are there any changes to our agenda?
There are no changes. Mr. Chairman.
Great. Then, Chair, entertain a motion to approve agenda as posted and delivered.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve agenda and allow Chair to debate as needed.
Thank you. I'll second that motion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And motion carries. Our agenda is adopted. At this time, we're going to go to Item C, Call to the Public. And if you are on the phone and wish to address the board, or unless we had a request, there's no request, remember to press *9 so we can see if your hand goes up and then we will allow you to address the board. You will have three minutes to make your comments to the board. So anybody on the phone wishing to address the board under Call to the Public, now's your chance. *9.
And I think there's a raise your hand function for the...
On the Zoom, is there a raise your hand?
On the bottom.
If there's a raise your hand, then you can use that as well and we will allow you to address the board.
We did have an individual indication to address the board.
Someone unmuted and so, there you go.
Okay.
So Richard?
Richard, go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hi, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now, Richard. You have three minutes and go ahead and identify yourself and once you do that, we'll start the timer.
Oh, well, it's not going to take that. This is Richard DeFenderfer. I am on the agenda later for approval of the winery tasting liquor license for flying kite vineyard. Just want to say I'm here to answer any questions. My wife and I have started growing here over, a little over 10 years ago and was hoping to be there in person, but during these times, we can't. We've been looking forward to this for a long time. Just we're a small, little grower out there and that's what we're hoping to do. So if there's any questions, I'm here on the phone. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Richard.
Thank you.
Anyone else under Call to the Public? Who's got their hand up? Okay, we already, we already had Richard. Anyone else under Call to the Public wishing to address the board? Okay, see none. We will move on then to current events. One, Board of Supervisors. Supervisor Malera.
Mr. Chairman, good morning.
Good morning.
Two items to report. First of all, again, once again, I want to thank Mariposa, Jennifer, all involved in the COVID vaccinations. Everything seems to be going pretty smoothly and the big question is, when are we going to get more? And I hope soon. And again, I commend your efficiency and the hard work of everyone participating. Lastly, I just want to mention that I attended the LPC Friday meeting. There's a lot of bills dropping right now, so we got to all be on top of things and I know Jennifer's usually really good and if we need to oppose or support, we'll be right there, ready. And that's all I have to report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you Supervisor Malera. And I know especially a lot of election-related bills. I was reading the latest one yesterday by Rita O’Genti. And I mean, I hope the governor is serious about vetoing some. We don't need to take the people's vote away and let a legislature decide who we're going to vote for, so we'll be keeping an eye on it and move forward. A couple of things. First, I'd like to give my condolences to the Almeida family. Gabriel Almeida works down doing security. His brother, Alfonso, passed away. He was one of my best friends. We were in high school together.
I'm sorry to hear.
And I know that their mother passed away about two months ago, maybe. And when I found out, I talked to Alfonso's sister and, you know, she was beside herself and I hope you keep the Almeida family in your prayers. It's tough and I believe it was COVID-related too, so we're still not out of the woods yet. I do want to thank staff, Jennifer, for putting together all the assets that we have so that they can call people when they're setting up their appointments. Mariposa Community Health for helping administer the vaccines. To the volunteers, I know Dr. Malera has been volunteering down there and there's a lot of volunteers that are really stepping up to assist the community and we still need to be vigilant. We still need to take care of ourselves. We still need to wash our hands, wear our mask, social distance as much as possible and be very careful. Hopefully, we will be receiving more vaccines. I know that we're not the only community in this great country of ours that's having problems and I guess the only good thing that we live in the Southwest is we're not having the issues that they're having back East where they're having to postpone a lot of, a lot of the sites with what they're doing that. So with that, I will go to...
Mr. Chair.
Yes?
Can I just add one more thing?
Yes, please.
I want to send out my deepest condolences to the Cicados family. He's one of our school district employees, passed away over the weekend.
Car accident.
Grafted Cicados, I think is his name, former student and basketball player of mine. My deepest thoughts, prayers to go to his family.
Yeah, I heard he passed away in a car accident yesterday? Was it yesterday?
Last night. No, two nights ago.
So anyway, yeah. Keep the Cicados and Almeida families in your prayer. Thank you Supervisor Malera. We'll move on to Item Two, Managers' Report.
Good morning again, Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Malera. As you've both mentioned, we're in our fourth week of the vaccination pod that's at the City of Nogales Rec Center. We started the first week with 100 doses a day for three days at the pod. We went to 300 doses a day and this week, we're doing 400 doses a day for the three days. Starting next week, we're going to really start ramping up those second doses. A lot of the second doses will be due starting next week and we're excited about, you know, getting those individuals fully immunized. So I want to thank everybody involved. It's been a massive effort. Our partners at Mariposa, City of Nogales, our two, our school districts have been sending volunteers as well. Some of our retired employees have been back volunteering, so it's just a great effort and I think we're doing great things for the community. It's a very exciting project, so thank you to all involved. I also attended the county managers' meetings over the last two weeks, as well as the CSA Board of Directors meeting. And as Supervisor Malera mentioned, we're following a lot of bills. They're dropping a lot of bills in a COVID time, so we do have to stay diligent. I'm handing those out to staff to comment and we get those back to CSA and that's how we decide whether to move forward with opposition or supporting the bill. And we also had a meeting, the county managers, with the governor's office regarding the vaccine distribution. As you know, we've been reaching out to our federal and state legislators and delegation senators to try to get more vaccines. I gave a COVID-19 update to both the Citizens Council, as well as the Board of the Port Authority over the last two weeks. Dr. Bede and I have been doing interviews on TV and radio, as well as Jeff, our health director. And then we've had our monthly meeting with all the school superintendents. So it's the county, Mariposa, and Mr. Young helps us coordinate with all the school superintendents where we just talk about vaccines going out to teachers and the reopening of schools. So that is my report for the last two weeks. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Jennifer. And I know that we're into 1B now, right?
We are. We're into 1B. That's a good point Supervisor Reese. We are obviously vaccinating still 1A, but 1B, the individuals who are vaccinated now is over 75, teach educators, as well as essential workers and law enforcement.
And I did hear one comment on registering on our website. It has to do with a calendar that you have to scroll back to get instead of you being able to write your birthday. You have to scroll back. So if you were born in the 50s and the 40s and you're in 2021, you have to scroll all the way to hit on your birthday to do that. Everything else is okay. You type it in and I don't know...
That seems to be an issue on, when you're using the cellphone. We have not experienced that issue at all if you're using a laptop or a computer, but it does seem to be an issue on some people's cellphone.
Yeah, it's just, just a comment that they said, you know, kind of makes it crazy. Well, you try to do something and then it won't, so. But anyway, just something that was brought to my attention, so.
Thank you. Thank you Supervisor.
But good job. Great. Yes, go ahead.
Jennifer, it was great to see a response for the governor's office from Ben Link, reply to our letter that we sent. And I also want to thank Craig at CSA for sending a letter out to our congressional as well about our vaccine shortage.
Absolutely.
So, good, great job on all fronts. Thank you.
Absolutely, absolutely. Okay, we'll move on to Item E, Department Reports and Activities. One, Finance, Cash, Investment Expenditures and Revenue Report. Mauricio, good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, Mr. Malera. Cash and investment report. The general fund has an overall balance of $11,150,080 with an investment amount of $1,782,000. The road fund has an overall balance of $2,313,66 with an investment amount of $814,757. The flood control district has an overall balance of $2,939,506 with an investment amount The jail district has an overall balance of $1,622,024 with an investment amount of Total for all funds, $29,785,029 with an investment amount of $7,297,623 with an estimated end-of-the-month balance of $8,446,364.
Good, great. Thank you, Mauricio. Any questions?
No, sir.
If not, at this time, Chair, entertain a motion to recess a regular session convenant to the flood control district.
So move.
I'll second that discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We are now in flood control district meeting. Item One, Directors' Project Report. John, good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. You should have a report there in front of you. I do wish to highlight and update a couple of items. One is Item Number Four. At last month's meeting, I mentioned that it looked like the date was going to be May 21st for those two letter of map provisions. We did receive the official notification paperwork from FEMA and the date of the map provisions will actually be May 5th.
May 5th?
So those are moved up from the 21st.
Okay.
Item Number Eight, we ended the month with six requests for floodplain use permits, two of which were from the City of Nogales. And Item Number Nine, we ended the month with 197 requests for information on property status, 28 of which were from the City of Nogales and none were from the town of Patagonia.
Great. Any questions? If not...
No, sir.
Monthly report from the City of Nogales?
Did not receive a report from the city.
Item Three, Monthly Report from the Town of Patagonia?
Did not receive one from the Town of Patagonia.
Okay, we'll move on to Item Four, Public Comment. Anyone wishing to comment on any issues related to the flood control district, even people on the, on the phone? If you do *9 or raise your hand, if you have a comment on any kind of flood control issue, we will listen to your comments at this time.
Mr. Chair, move to adjourn flood control and reconvene in general session?
Second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Motion carries. We are now reconvened. Item G, Action Items One. Discussion Possible Action for Authorization to Fill a Deputy Sheriff Position. B, Eligibility Special for WIOA. That's it.
Move to approve Items A and B.
I'll second that discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Motion carries and items approved. We'll move on to Item Two, Discussion Possible Action to Approve the Reappointment of Deneen L. Peterson as Full-Time Pro Tempore for Santa Cruz County from July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2022. Chair, entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Hear a second. I'll second that. Discussion, hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item Three, Discussion Possible Action to Approve the Reappointment of Sheila Isadacan? Dacun or Dagukan? Dagukan? As temporary, as temporary part-time pro tempore to serve as judicial resource in conflict cases. Settlement conferences and general caseload when unexpected leaves occur among elected judges from July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2022. Chair, entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
I'll second that. Discussion, hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item Number Four, Discussion Possible Action to Approve Proposed Agreement with ADT Commercial for Card Access Control Readers in the Five Courtrooms in the Amount of $15,720.91. Chair, entertain a motion.
To approve.
And I'll second. And these card readers are for paying...
The card readers are for the courtroom? There's a security measure to control who can actually get out of the courtroom?
So, so it's for security of the court?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's all I need. Thank you. There's a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item Five, Discussion Possible Action to Approve Fiscal Year 20 Operation Stone Garden OPSG Grant Program Awards with the Arizona Department of Homeland Security for A, Subrecipient Agreement Number 20431-01 OPSG Overtime and Mileage in the Amount of $711,319 and B, Subrecipient Agreement 20431-02 OPSG Equipment in the Amount of $70,000. Everything good? Chair, entertain a motion.
Move to approve Items A and B.
I'll second that. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Motion carries and we'll move on to Item Six. Discussion Possible Action to Approve Proclamation Declaring February 21st as Childhood Education Awareness Month. And I will go ahead and read into the record the proclamation and then move for its approval. So the proclamation is as follows. Early Childhood Education Awareness Month, February 2021. Whereas early childhood years are when the brain grows and develops the most. In fact, 90% of child's brain develops by age five before they enter kindergarten. And whereas, scientific research has shown that a child's experiences in their early years affect how their brain develops. Research has also proven that kids with quality early childhood experiences do better in school and are more likely to go to college and have successful careers. They also tend to be healthier and demand less from the public welfare system. And whereas, the goal of Santa Cruz County Superintendent Alfredo Ivelasquez in 2021 is to raise community awareness about the support system Santa Cruz County has for families that have children from zero to five years of age. And whereas, Early Childhood Education Awareness Month is sponsored by the Santa Cruz County Superintendent School Office, First Things First, Mariposa Community Health Center, University of Arizona Family Resource Centers, both in Nogales, Patagonia, and Rio Rico, Child and Family Resources, Inc., Child Care Resources and Referrals, Nogales-Santa Cruz County Libraries, Santa Cruz County, Nogales Unified School District Number One, Santa Cruz Valley Unified School District Number 35, Patagonia Public School Districts Number Six and Twenty, Sonoyt Elementary District Number Twenty-five, Santa Cruz Elementary District Twenty-eight, Charter Schools, Private Schools, Child Parents Centers, Inc., Nogales, Challenger, Western, Rio Rico Head Start Centers, Preschool and Child Care Providers. And whereas, during the month of February, informative messages will be communicated to the community via social media, radio, and signage concerning young children with themes including the Santa Cruz County Superintendent's Office promoting early registration for kindergarten, early childhood leadership awards, and the Santa Cruz Regional Partnership Council of First Things First, along with the University of Arizona Family Resource Centers promoting both behavioral and mental health, and Mariposa Community Health Centers promoting the importance of wellness checks, dental care, and vaccines, and STEM-related activities, grab-and-go activities, the virtual book club at the Nogales-Santa Cruz County Libraries. Now, therefore, the Santa Cruz County, Arizona Board of Supervisors does hereby proclaim the month of February 2021 as Early Childhood Education Awareness Month and urges all citizens to actively participate in scheduled activities and programs sponsored by local, state, and national organizations to work toward the elimination of personal and institutional violence against women and children. Passed and adopted on the second day of February 2021, Rudy Malera, member, Bruce Bracker, Vice Chairman, many reasons. Chairman, and I will move its approval and I will say that I am a member of the Nogales Unified School District Number One. Governing Board has disclosure but have no, I don't know what the word is, any kind of monetary interest or conflict in this, so. That is my motion.
I will second.
I don't know all these school district numbers. So there is a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and the proclamation is adopted. Please thank Alfredo and I hope the community takes advantages of the things that, that are out there for children. I know for a fact with my little 18-month-old grandson that that kid's a sponge and he is curious and he likes to learn. He likes for me to read to him. That's important. He grabs his little books and he brings them to me and so I think it's important that we do that so that our kids will be ready from day one when they start school, so. Thank Alfredo, Chris. Okay, we'll go to, so that was Item Six, which passed and adopted. Item Seven, Discussion, Discussion Possible Action to Approve Cisco Internet Equipment Agreement with Sentinel Technology, Inc. for cybersecurity equipment and services in the amount of $82,858.05. Chair, entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
And I will second that motion. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item Eight, Discussion Possible Action to Urge U.S. Customs and Border Protection and the General Service Administration to Initiate the Feasibility Study for the Modernization of the DeCansini Port of Entry. I know that was an item brought by Vice Chairman Bracker. I know that Mariposa got a tremendous upgrade when we had those funds that came in and I think hopefully they can try to find other funds to really modernize that port downtown Nogales. It really chokes up vehicles both southbound and northbound, so hopefully they can find a way to reconfigure and make it more efficient, so. Chair, entertain a motion?
Move to approve.
Hear a second? I mean, I'll second, do I hear a second? I keep forgetting Bruce is not here. I will second the motion. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Discussion Possible Action to Approve Appointment of Precinct Committee Persons for the Santa Cruz County, excuse me, Republican Party requested by Steve McEwen, Chairman of the SEC Republican Party. A, Ivette "DeBron" Calixto, Coronado Five. Melanie J. Norden, Pyle, Elgin, Six. And Peter R., it looks like Lea, Leela or Lea, Nogales Twenty. Chair, entertain a motion to approve.
Mr. Chair, move to approve Items A, B, and C.
I will second that and that, don't let it be said that the Democratic Party does not work in a bipartisan fashion with our Republican friends, so. With that, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. We'll move on to Item Ten, Discussion Possible Action Recommendation to Approve Disapprove Application for License for Flying Kite Vineyards in Elgin. We're good to go, Jennifer?
Everything is in order.
Great. Chair, entertain a motion?
Mr. Chair, move to approve.
I will second that motion. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously and that's with the approval. Item Eleven, Discussion Possible Action to Approve Bond for Duplicate Warrant Number 4038076 in the amount of $1,574.62 dated 11/25/2020 payable to UNS Gas, Inc.
Move to approve.
I will second that discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item Twelve, Tax Valuations A and B. Chair, entertain a motion?
Move to approve. Items A and B.
I will second that discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item Thirteen, Approval of Minutes of 1/5/2021 and 1/15/2021.
Move to approve.
I will second that. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item Fourteen, Demands. Supervisor Malera.
Mr. Chair, move to approve demands totaling $678,531.11, of which $223,655.21 from the general fund.
I will second that motion. Discussion, hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item Fifteen, Discussion Possible Action to Approve Resolution Number 2021-02 Authorizing the Submission of an Application for the CARES Community Development Block Grants, CDB, GCV I and II Emergency Substance Funds. And Jennifer?
Mr. Chair, we need to go into the public hearing first. My apologies.
Oh, okay. Well, let me back up then. At this time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn regular session and convene into public hearing.
So move.
Great, we are now in the, I'll second that discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item One, for the hearing, Potential CARES, CDB, GCV I and II Projects. Madam Manager.
Mr. Chairman, Ms. Doll is on the phone. I would like for her to take this item, if that's okay?
Ms. Doll, if you would unmute yourself and grace us with your comments. Are you muted? She's still muted, I think.
*6 unmuted.
Well, she's on the phone, so the phone...
*6?
*6, Mary.
Uh huh.
Too busy wiping chairs.
She's outside. She took a break. She took a break from her volunteering. Maybe it should be... Maybe it should be star six or star nine. We did star six according to one.
Star six or star nine, one or the other? Well, her phone's not working. Okay.
All right.
Okay. Can she unmute or not?
It doesn't appear like. All right. I'll give it a try.
Okay. Go ahead, Jennifer.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Miletta, this is some CARES Act money for CDBG that can be used for rental assistance, mortgage assistance, and utility assistance. So the application that we have in is for four hundred thousand dollars, and it would be being dispersed in accordance to the CDBG guidelines over the next twelve months. That's really all I have to say about it. It's a pretty, we did a program that was similar to this back in oh seven, oh eight in that timeframe when we had, you know, lost financial downfall. And so we're just excited to potentially get this money out to our residents to help them during this trying time.
And it's all income qualified? So, or does everybody?
No, no. It's definitely, there's an income component. I believe there's other, it's, I do know that it has to be, you have to be behind in your payments. And so there's other qualifications too Supervisor Reese, but Mary's really been spearheading this. I apologize that I don't know the exact details.
And that's fine, because I think if we are successful in receiving this money, I think it's very important that we tell the community what the requirements are. So, you know, we don't want to give false expectation to some people that maybe, but because, you know, their income level or something else may not qualify. So I want to make sure that we do, that we have as much information available. And, you know, hopefully there's other CARES money as well for small business, but that's a sidebar there too, because I know we've had some requests as well. Mary wasn't able to unmute, but Mary, thank you. If we have any questions, we can reach out to you, and I want to thank you for participating there at our vaccination sites. You probably work more hours now than when you were our Community Development Director, so I really do want to thank you for everything that you do and continue to do for this community, which is also your community. So, so thank you, Mary. So at this time, we can open it up. Is anyone on the phone wishing to make any comments? Star nine or star six? Or raise your hand if you're on Zoom? Okay. Doesn't look like we have any comments. So at this time, Chair entertain a motion to adjourn our public hearing and reconvene regular session.
So move.
I'll second that discussion. Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye. And motion carries. We are now into our regular session. Item G fifteen, discussion, possible action to approve resolution number twenty twenty-one dash oh two authorizing the submission of an application for the CARES Community Development Block Grant CDBG dash C V one and two emergency substance funds. Chair entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
I will second that. Any discussion?
Discussion. I personally want to thank Mary, and it's a great opportunity for our community to get extra help. Thanks again, Mary.
I concur. So there's a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Before we adjourn, I want to go back to current events and to let the community know that there's people calling, that they're from T E P, saying that they're behind a couple of months, that they need to go buy a card at a local, either the, one of the local stores because they need to make a payment right away. Please be aware that it's a scam. It's happened down here. It's happening in Tucson. I know that they called me, and I said, really? Well, how come you won't take my credit card? Oh, because we need to send you. Oh, really? Well, I'm going to call myself, and I'm going to call my friends at the utility companies. Of course, the call stopped. So be careful, because once you do go buy one of those cards, they either ask you for eBay cards, or they ask you for money cards. Please, if they call you, say, just hang up. If they're persistent, call the authorities, because we don't want people to get scammed, especially now. I know the utility company down here has been very helpful in these trying times of not disconnecting or making arrangements with its customers to make sure that the power stays on. So just wanted to let everybody know that it can happen, so please be aware of that. So at this time, what I will, yeah, go ahead, Mr.
To recess?
Huh?
Move to recess till eleven o'clock?
So, yeah, we will stand at recess. I'll second that until eleven o'clock when we have a public study session on COVID. So we are recessed till eleven. Gentlemen, thank you very much. Our, at this time, Chair will entertain a motion to reconvene our session and go into the study session.
So move.
I'll second that discussion. Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye. And we are now convening into the study session, and this is a COVID-19 update. So Jennifer.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We held a similar study session in early January just to give the public an update on the COVID-19 vaccination process. We're doing this in partnership with Mariposa, which I don't see on the phone yet, but I do see Ms. Dina Sanchez of Holy Cross. So welcome, Dina. Thank you for being on the phone.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you. So maybe just a brief overview, while the Mariposa team, they did call me, that they were going to be a little bit late, but just to let the board know, we're in our fourth week of our vaccination pod that's located at the City of Nogales Rec Center, fifteen-hundred North Hoakum, for those individuals that don't know where it's at. We began by vaccinating one hundred a day for three days a week. We then moved into three hundred a day for the next two weeks, and this week we are vaccinating four hundred a day at that rec center today, Thursday, and Friday. We are going to start with the second shots pretty soon. They're going to start being a bigger dosage, and so we will be accommodating those as well. Okay. Dr. Padilla just texted me that he's on the phone.
Right.
Maybe a little bit before I turn it over to Dr. Padilla is, so we have the pre-registration list, so we encourage everyone, the public, to pre-register if they're in Phase One B. They can do that on our website or by calling five two zero three seven five seventy-six twenty-six. We do have that manned, and we are pre-registering anyone that isn't on the phone, or that doesn't have access to the computer. Once the vaccines are available for them to have an appointment, our call schedulers are calling the individuals of the group that we're currently vaccinating, and they set the appointment up, and then they go through the appointment process. And we're very pleased to have the partnership with Mariposa, the city, the school districts, and we've gotten some great comments, so we just couldn't be prouder of the team of everything that they're doing. I think that's all I have in my brief overview. Jeff, do you want to add anything before we?
No, just to reiterate, we are having a great partnership with Mariposa, the City of Nogales, all the volunteers that are coming in and helping us out as well. We do really appreciate that. Like you said, we are pushing it this week to vaccinate about four hundred through, per day through the pod, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, as well as Mariposa doing an additional one hundred at their site, which are basically second shots for them.
Great. So Dr. Padilla, if you would unmute yourself. I don't know what your number is. Either star six or star nine. Oh, there it is. Can you unmute him?
Can you hear me now?
There you are. Go ahead, doctor. Morning. Good morning.
Good morning. Sorry about that. I have trouble here with my computer. I hope you can hear me.
Yes, we can hear you.
Great. Sorry about the noise. I'm here at the rec, so you may, you may hear noise. The only thing I have to add is, you know, is our commitment to use the vaccine as soon as we receive them. We, this week, we hope to do two thousand vaccinations. We'll do five hundred a day, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday, and then the other day, on Monday, we'll do seventy-three, and on Wednesday we'll do about one hundred at the clinics, so five hundred at the Mariposa Building and the rest here, so probably close to two thousand.
Wow.
I think we, if my memory serves me well, Jennifer, we, that would be probably by the end of the week, it would be about sixty-seven hundred vaccinations. We reserve a few for Monday and part of Tuesday. We're not getting the vaccines until Tuesday, so we, you know, we have a commitment to vaccinate every day, and we need to reserve a few until we get, we get the vaccines. At the moment, we're getting Moderna, but we, we're ready to use Pfizer if needed. We do have the freezer at Mariposa to store the Pfizer vaccine if it arise. We're happy to manage either vaccination. You may remember that the Pfizer vaccine does require very, very low temperatures, a special storage requirement, but we were able to manage that. So we're here direct following the plan that Jennifer discussed. We have started the second doses for some folks that we vaccinated in December. That's gone very well. As you would imagine, the second dose numbers are increasing, as we're supposed to be, as the, and those people vaccinated early are due for the second dose. I think next week we'll have about eight hundred and sixty-six people due for that. We're going to do about five hundred of those at the Mariposa Building, and the other three hundred and sixty-six at the rec, along with about three hundred new doses. You know, we always assume that the allocation will not decrease. We're assuming we'll get about twelve hundred, thirteen hundred doses, and so, and so that's the plan. I think I'm going to stop here and ask if you have any questions. Jennifer, is there anything that you'd like for me to comment on?
I think maybe one thing, Dr. Padilla, I think we're all getting some questions about in Phase One B, the subgroups, and how are we prioritizing those subgroups? So Dr. Padilla, maybe if you could touch on, you know, what the thought process we go through and what, and the data that we're looking at?
Sure, sure. So maybe before I do that, I'll remind everyone that we don't have enough vaccines. It's very limited supply.
Absolutely.
So frequently, my answer is we don't have enough vaccines to do what we have to do. Having said that, you know, there are guidelines that have been submitted to us, and we do our best to follow those. Certainly, early on, we wanted to vaccinate those who are seventy-five and older, and I believe the data indicated that there were three thousand five hundred people who are seventy-five and older. We're reaching out to those. A significant portion have been vaccinated, but there are some that have not, so we're reaching out to them. That's our target group. And then following recommendations, we also doing the one B in terms of what is considered essential workers, and, you know, those are individuals who do certain occupations to maintain law enforcement, for example, issues related to public safety that include police sheriffs, CVP, Border Patrol, so that's law enforcement, and then other occupations to keep the city and the county running, essentially, and other individuals who fit in that category. That's still, you know, quite a few people. You know, we do our best to follow that. The county has created a listing of individuals that may be called during the day if people don't show, or there may be some extra doses. You know, the extra doses are not for sure. Sometimes we do, sometimes we don't, but we're now keeping a list that people can call. So, I mean, that's essentially what we're doing. Some of you have been at the rec. You see what we do. There's no difference in the last few days. It's very comfortable. We've had great collaboration from various agencies, county government, city government, volunteers, et cetera. Authority has been very gracious with us too. I think, I think that's, we'll stop here and see if you have any questions.
Any questions, Supervisor Miletta?
Yes, first of all, I want to thank Dr. Padilla, your staff, and Jennifer, Jeff, Ray, our staff, and volunteers for all their hard work. Every week, you've increased, and you've done it pretty much flawlessly. Of course, we've had our hiccups here and there, and it's part of the process. We all understand that. And for me, it's been, it's been uplifting because every week we increase. And, you know, part of me worries because now we're going to double up, like Dr. Padilla said, we've got the people that are taking the second vaccine and people taking their initial first. So, but I really want to commend you on how you've handled things. We've pretty much taken care of the seventy-five and olders, all the critical people that are working in hospitals and in your clinic, our policemen. Now we're starting with our teachers, I take it, and we've been doing teachers and essential workers. That's great. My only question right now at this point is, there's still high-risk people that have illnesses or people that are within that range of, I'm going to say sixty-five to seventy-five. Are those up next, I'm taking?
Yeah. Yeah, they're up next. Yeah, you're right. We began with the teachers, so that our hope is that, you know, at some point the school can reopen. You know, there's no vaccine for children, so certainly the teachers should be vaccinated. The food industry as well, because it's a critical component of the country, but that group is next. And, you know, we continue to advocate for more vaccines. If we get more vaccines sooner rather than later, I think we're prepared to move that to that group. We continue to hire more vaccinators at Mariposa. We've hired more new ones and more staff trained in the registration process, so we essentially preparing to administer more vaccines if our allocation increases. But that's certainly the next group. You know, it's so, it's not secret. I hope you know this, but it's been, hold on one moment. I'm sorry for this direction. So we, yeah, we're moving as fast as we can. It's not secret that we've been a little frustrated, remember vaccines? But that's across the country. It's no difference in Santa Cruz County, but I think many have advocated for us to get more vaccines, but I think the bottom line is that we're ready to. get more vaccines, but I think the bottom line is that we're ready to, to receive them if, if they're given to us.
And, and absolutely, Dr. Pareda, I, I echo the comments of my colleague in thanking you with the partnership with our county here, with Jennifer and with Jeff, and, you know, helping set up all the logistics that are necessary to be able to get people registered, to have people call the people that have been registered, and setting up their appointments for their, their first, or even now going into their second vaccine. You know, I think, I share the same concerns that you do, that, you know, there's not enough vaccines out there. And as long as we continue to receive our same allotment, and we hope it continues, because we, we, we don't know, I don't think anybody knows, you know, what's, what's gonna happen here. I know that there's a new administration that is promising, you know, so many vaccines to roll out, and, and hopefully, that is the case, but, but we still need to make sure that as, as we continue to vaccinate people, especially if we're using the vaccine that requires two doses, that we have enough, not just for the first vaccine, but for the second one. And I think you guys are doing a, a great job. And, you know, I know it's, it's, it's a tough situation that, you know, this whole country and the world has been placed in, but I think as long as people are patient, they continue to register, if they're able to online, or if not, call the phone number to make sure that they get registered, I think we, as a community, will do everything possible as the vaccines start coming in, to be able to get them into their arms and protect it against this terrible disease. And as, as we tell everyone, you still need to mask, you still need to wash your hands, and, and you need to social distance, because we're still not out of the woods yet. And in order to get to what they call herd immunity, you need to have at least 70 to 80% of the people vaccinated. And, and then, of course, that leaves our, our teenagers and our children, and I understand they're working on, on, on a vaccine for them too. I think they're gonna start tests here, maybe not in the too-distant future, but we know we want to get to, back to normal as soon as possible, opening up our business, opening up our schools and, and our churches, and, and try to get as normal as we can, you know, like I said, short of something catastrophic happening. Hopefully, we continue to receive the same amount of vaccinations or vaccines that we've been getting weekly. I know that we've, we've pushed for more, and I'm sure we're not the only community, but even the governor was on, on television saying, you know, we may run, run out. So, we will do everything we can in our power here to continue to advocate for the citizens of this great community to be able to have access to those vaccines. So, you know, thank you, thank the volunteers, thank everyone that has been involved. It's, it's been a monumental effort by a lot of people in this community.
Mr. Chair, I just want to add one thing, I, I also want to thank Deana at the Holy Cross Hospital for her assistance as well, and her communication, and, and being part of our team, along with the school districts as well. Dr. Pareda, I have a question for you. Somewhere this morning, I read, I, I know all the research is, is in, it's infant stages, but I, I read where if someone had tested positive and had COVID, maybe one vaccine might suffice? Is that something that's being looked at?
Yeah, I, I actually read the same. So that's exactly right, they're looking at the people who have COVID-19 infection, whether one shot may be protective enough not to give the second shot. That's very preliminary. At the moment, Moderna and others, including the, the administration, are recommending to continue what we're doing. In other, in other words, two, two shots, even after COVID-19 infection. Certainly, if that becomes an official recommendation by CDC and Moderna, we will follow that. Certainly, we'll take a little more in, in terms of looking at those people with COVID-19 infection. So, at the moment, it's, it's an observation, but there's no official recommendation to do that at, at this time.
Thank you.
Yeah, there's, there, you know, we're still waiting on another vaccine to turn in the information to the FDA, which is the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine. But, you know, I think my concern and the concern of others are the new mutations of the viruses that are now appearing in our country. I think the UK virus is now in Arizona, from what I understand. You have the South African virus, and been identified in, in two states, I think it was Maryland, and I'm trying to remember which the other one was, and then the Brazilian one that was identified in, in Minnesota. So, those are, you know, different variants of the virus that has mutated, and so, you know, the, the good news on the UK, and maybe even on the South African, from what I've been able to see, is that this vaccine helps reduce the severity of, of, of the disease. The Brazilian one, I haven't heard too much of what consequences or what the two vaccines that are being used in this country, whether it's Pfizer or Moderna. So, I, you know, I don't know what, what have you heard as far as the UK virus here in Arizona, Dr. Pareda?
So, yeah, it's, I, what we hear is that, I think it's becoming more prevalent across the country, and we expect it to, to be here. It's already here, so we know that. At the moment, Moderna is saying that the vaccine is efficacious for all the variants that have been tested, that's, that's really good news. So we're just doing a long, I just want to emphasize what you said earlier, that prevention is still key, in particular, if the variants become more prevalent, that we still need to wear masks, wash your hands, keep the distance, no household gathering, things of that nature. Because if indeed, the new variants become more widespread, if we don't take those precautions, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a problem. I just want to make a, a brief comment about the vaccine and, and, and infection. Some, some of you may, may know this, you know, the vaccine itself may not prevent the virus from entering your body, so you could still become infected. But, but the vaccine does, it reduces the potential for severe illness and, and death. So those are the two main, main clinical outcomes that are affected by the vaccine. There've been a few cases already reported where people received the vaccine and they tested positive with their PCR. I believe one congressman tested positive after the, the riots in Washington.
Right.
But he did not become ill. So, we don't know the consequence of that in terms of transmission, how likely that individual is to transmit it to others. So, again, another reason not to lower the guard after, after the vaccination. So I, I think that's something I wanted to mention.
Yeah, and, and another, another thing too, Dr. Pareda, is I, I know that you would recommend that if someone's not feeling well, if they're sick, to please stay home. You know, we can, we can wear the mask, we can wash our hands, we can social distance, but if you're not feeling well, and you go into your place of work or somewhere else, and, and you haven't been tested, you have, then you become a spreader if you are testing positive to that, and we don't want that to happen. If you're not feeling well, make a, call your doctor, tell them what your symptoms are, and, you know, that's, that's another way to help fight this pandemic, is that correct?
Absolutely, that's exactly right, Supervisor. And also, along the same lines, it's, it's also possible that you could have acquired COVID-19 just before you received the vaccine, and you have no symptoms yet. We've had a few of those, and that's been reported widely. Remember, it may take a few days for you to develop symptoms, typically four to seven. By day 11, most people will have symptoms, but we've had a few instances in which the patient was vaccinated, but they had no symptoms of COVID-19. We, we do recommend, and CDC does too, that anyone who had, has any fever, any systemic symptoms, following the COVID-19 vaccine and lasts longer than 48, 72 hours, that they should counsel their doctor for possible testing for COVID-19. So if, if the symptoms last longer than usual, they should be seen, because they could have COVID-19. The vaccine itself does not make the test or the PCR positive, so if the PCR is positive, we assume they have the infection. So it's always something to remember, that they should be tested if they develop any symptoms after the vaccine. Early on, most symptoms, we will attribute to the vaccine, because they're fairly common. But if they have, if they last longer than 48, 72 hours, they should be tested.
Yeah, absolutely, I, I think, you know, it's incumbent on, on all of us to make sure that we take care of our own health, and if you receive the vaccine and, and you have some of those symptoms, and they last longer than normal, please contact your, your physician and, and make sure that you get tested, because I think at, at the end of the day, what we don't want to happen is for you to be intubated or, or be in a hospital, because everything that I've seen on news reports and, and even read, shows that people that, that are, get very sick usually have some major problems afterwards, especially in their lungs and, and some of their other organs, but mainly the lungs, they get so scarred up. In fact, somebody said it was like they, you know, have been heavier than people that smoke, I think the lungs get scarred, so we don't want that to happen, and we don't want. I think we've lost 151 Santa Cruz County residents from our report this morning, even though our positive infections have, have dropped, they've been down between 25, it was 18 today, it was 11 yesterday, I think it was nine or eight the day before. So, we can see that probably what we're doing is maybe helping, and the testing that we're doing is showing that, that it's working, but, you know, still, at the end of the day, we can't let our, our guard down, and, and hopefully, as, as we continue to vaccinate more Santa Cruz County residents, more people across this great state and this country, and the world for that matter, is that we begin to try to bring at least some kind of control to this, this horrible pandemic.
Yes, that's exactly right, Supervisor, you're right.
Any other questions? Anyone that's on the call have any specific questions that you would like to either ask staff or Dr. Pareda? If you're, it's either star six or star nine, or if you're on the computer, I think there's a little raise-your-hand icon, you can hit on that, and we'll acknowledge you, and we'll allow you to ask, or are there any questions in the chat box there that you can see one? So I don't see anybody raising their hand or getting unmuted. Dr. Pareda, thank you so much for your partnership with Santa Cruz County. Deana, Holy Cross, thank you for participating with this huge endeavor. Jennifer, Jeff, volunteers, staff, we've had people working seven days a week, including holidays, to make sure that we get those appointments to people, whether it's, they get called on a Saturday or a Sunday, or, or in the evening. I know it, it's been a terrific partnership and effort, and I know that we will continue to persevere, we will continue to do what it is that we need to do to make sure that every resident here in Santa Cruz County is able to get the vaccine and to be safe, and, and if it wasn't for all your work, I don't think we'd be as far ahead as we are. And, Dr. Pareda, once again, thank you, your staff, for everything that you're doing, and hopefully, in the not-too-distant future, we'll begin to get the right amount of vaccines to be able to get everybody inoculated and protected, so Supervisor Maleta, anything to add?
Mr. Chairman, just one last thing, I, I want to also thank the city in Nogales, John Kissinger and, and their staff, for allowing us to use the, the recreation, and, and their support as well, and pray for more vaccinations.
Absolutely, and yeah, John, thank you very much, I'm sorry, I'm sorry I overlooked you, but you, you've also been a tremendous partner by providing an area so that it, it allows our residents to go and, and get inoculated without having to stand out in, in inclement weather, like we did last week where we had those snowstorms. So, with that, thank you so much for the information and the update, and hopefully, in the not-too-distant future, we can have another one that says that, you know, we're 100% vaccinated, but until that happens, we will continue to do everything. Dr. Pareda, anything to add before we adjourn our study session?
No, just thank you for allowing me, just a brief acknowledgement, this has been a true team effort, we have a great team, I don't think this would have been possible without the collaboration of the county, the city, the volunteers, Nogales Police Department, emergency medical technicians from Nogales, Rio Rico, the Port Authority and fresh produce by providing meals, I mean, this has been just a remarkable collaboration. I, I have a chance to meet with other, chief medical officers of other health centers across the state, I had one meeting yesterday, and this kind of collaboration is not seen, so this is just remarkable, I'm gonna thank all of you. Also, I want to thank Deana and Holy Cross, you know, they, they have been really managing a lot of sick patients, shortage of breath, fever, they need oxygen, and they're doing a remarkable job if they get sick. I want to make sure we acknowledge Holy Cross for that outstanding care, and Tenet as well, they, they manage patients that need help, both at St. Nurse and St. Joseph's, so thank you, Deana, and thank you, Holy Cross.
Okay, great, great, well, thank you so much, and, you know, we will continue to look forward to our, to our partnerships that we've established, and as more vaccines come in, and at some point, I hope that we have enough so that people don't have to drive into Nogales, and we can go out to their various areas and, and inoculate them there. So, thank you so much, and we'll talk to you soon. Thank you, Dr. Pareda, have a wonderful day, and, and please express our gratitude to your staff, to the volunteers, to the partners that have been working with you and the county to make, make sure that this goes smoothly as possible. So, thank you very much, at this time.
Thank you.
I will second that, and we will adjourn our study session, and then I will entertain a motion, oh, let's vote, all in favor, say aye. Our study session is adjourned, now move to adjourn our regular session.
To adjourn.
Second, any discussion, hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Meeting stands adjourned.